Did you have a question?
What's up, Lord?
I don't get a little light ones. Wash and dry them. If you wash and dry them, they get about.
We all. Are we on it? Yeah. It's another one dealing with the school.
You gotta wear it in the front, but you don't want to wear what it is.
And I'm the thing I thought about is.
It's just an update based on what had happened with the budget. He was just, they had met.
May you.
He was something in the board based on what had happened at the budget.
Because I don't want them thumbing and touching or everything as it is. So it's like. Um, they're seven and eighth. Second and third. Second and third. But I've been talking, I've been talking to them about it. I asked them how you were about school. Because I can't.
What is it, eighteen hundred twenty-five?
Yes.
Two hundred and forty.
Oh. No, it's two hundred and forty-five. So it's. Let me see.
I'll be good to you.
Let me see. Well, we got to change shoes. This one, they think it is. Unpressed, but it's, it's going to be helped. The older of the other end, it's kind of. She, she came down sick today, I think this is going to be right. P eleven?
Yes. We've had a couple.
Looks different.
I, I think that one is the same. We've had a couple of clocks up there because the first one that we put up there, it didn't work. Get another, so.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing none. We'll move into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
And Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
I'll ask you to stand for our prayer and ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
For Christ the Lord and Father, we just thank you right now, Father God, giving you glory and honor and praise. Thank you that this is the day that you have made. We shall rejoice and we shall be glad in it. Father God, we ask you to continue to look down upon our city, continue to look down upon our citizens, continue to protect us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Father God, we ask you to continue to protect our first responders, those that are responding. We ask you to continue to cover them right now, Father God, with help and strength and activity in order to help them. But not only that, Father, we ask you to continue to bless the North Oak system right now, Father God, continue to give them the tools and the strength that they need in order to move forward in the days to come. If ever a time we need you, Father God, we need you right now. So we thank you, Father God, that you continue to bless our council, continue to bless their families, continue to bless our city and administration right now, continue to bless their families and covers and keepers as well. We thank you that everything tonight will be done decent and hard and pleasingly in your sight, but therefore you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise in your most holy son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Now for our pledge, I'll ask all veterans and active military to render the proper salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the very public who worship its saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. We have council reports. We're gonna, we're gonna skip over the significant recognition until people feel safe coming. And does anyone else have a council report?
Yep, I have a few things. I just wanted to ask a few questions. That was, uh, the work that's projected to be done in my district, uh, when you're here, Webb, I wanted to ask about, uh, Brandy Lane, Tina, Brenda, and Tammy, those projects that are gonna get started. Do we have a projected, uh, start date on those improvements?
The drainage projects are about to start now.
Okay. Is that all over the city or are they gonna start on one, one side of the city or do we have a?
We don't dictate where they start.
Okay. So there's no schedule on, on what road or what, what's going on?
No, I'll, I'll get you a schedule on where they're gonna go first.
Okay. I've, I've been asking for it for a while, so I just wanna make sure I, I know where they're going or where they're starting. So, all right. Thank you. That's, that's the.
The street project that's on the agenda, that's gonna come after they do the drainage work there.
Okay. All right. And then, uh, Lacey asks you about the dumpsters, uh, for the rear load dumpsters for, uh, Saint, uh, Ruth St. Martin. About six months ago, it came up when we didn't, we didn't have any, uh, uh, tipper cans put on, uh, Ruth St. Martin. And then you said that, you know, they ain't got them yet. But anyway, we got them out there, but you said you were, y'all were in works of trying to get them in the rear of the buildings and, uh.
The dumpsters?
Yeah, the dumpsters. And so now it's been about six months, so I just wanna see where we're at as far as an actual.
That's why I emailed you and gave you the update and said that due to our staffing challenges that we had had, that was gonna be a project that we took on once we had more staff back.
Okay. I know it's been about six months. I understand a month or two, so I was just checking.
I don't think it's been about six months, but we're working on it.
February, about February, so we're in the seventh month. So.
We're, we're working on it.
Yeah, about four to five months. Okay. And then, um, so we gonna get a, a date on that?
We're working on it.
Okay. All right. And then, um, let's see, what else? Uh, I had a couple of you asking me about, uh, metal or the metal building on the Firestone, um, by the mall. Is that, is that gonna be just left metal or is it, you know, is there a siding that's gonna be coming on there, break, break for siding or anything? Can Tracy help me out on that or Cece?
If there's a composite panel that goes on top of that metal, it has been installed, yeah?
So it's gonna be a composite metal?
No.
What you said?
Composite paneling.
Paneling?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to check. Those are questions. Wanted to clarify that. And, uh, Joe Ferris, Lacey sent an email from you about the Joe Ferris, uh.
Yeah, I emailed you about that today.
Okay, I didn't get it. Must've been later after I checked mine, but, uh, you can update me now, though.
We sent over the request to them. That was the first that they had known about Joe Ferris. So. They're gonna get those out as soon as they can.
Sounds good. Just wanted to check. Appreciate it.
That's it?
Yep.
Go ahead, Kip.
Two things, quick things. One thing I would like to, uh, thank the Hammond Fire Department and the Hammond Police Department for taking out their, uh, time to, uh, do the escorts for, uh, people that were graduating, uh, other little parties and things of that nature. Uh, I think that, uh, was a great way to get back out into the community, uh, being seen with the fire trucks and, and, and the police doing it. So I know a lot of folks over in my neighborhood had activities were real pleased and thankful about it. So I just wanted to publicly thank the Fire Department and the Hammond Police Department for that. Uh, my other question is, uh, in reference to the garbage company, uh, I'm quite sure we've probably all been getting calls and things on that. Just trying to figure out where we're laying with that because either they don't pick up on their schedule today or they're day behind, or if they do pick it up, it's real late. They found them.
Last Friday, Robbie gave the landfill off, so that was last Friday. But you're right, there's a lot of other times they aren't picking up. I, we core, uh, we lined up the contract with this company with Ponchatoula. We've been doing it with them for many years. We lined it up so when it comes up for renewal, we'll be with the parish so we can get a better deal, hopefully as a whole. That being said, uh, we have been documenting, we have towed the garbage company. We're having problems with it. Um, if, if it does come to it, we'll go into a mode of fining them, uh, through reducing what we pay them. But we are having issues with them. Their response is COVID. Their response is having trouble with, uh, getting employees, but that's not what our constituents care about. They care about their garbage getting picked up. Um, I've talked with other, um, companies that would be willing to bid if it came to that, if we had to start this process over. Also talked with Robbie, uh, they're having problems in the parish. I talked with Bob, Zabia, they're having par, uh, problems as well. Uh, Bob's having serious problems with the fact that the curbside that they kept on is not happening at all. We do our pickup, uh, at the, at the barn twice a month, but what's happening with the ones that they directly contracted with in the city of Hammond, we're taking the calls as if we're, you know. And we, we called them and let them know we're not their call center. So they know we're having problems. We're gonna have to address that. We have, uh, I've talked to Robbie this past week and Bob, and we're planning on, I told him, please document, because some of them weren't documenting the problems they having. And with documentation comes being able to do something about it.
Is it just, is it with just a shortage of, of staff for the COVID virus? If all the companies are having the same issues or is it just?
Company I called said they didn't agree with that. Now maybe different companies having different issues, but.
I didn't know if Robbie said something, uh, he told my Robbie Miller.
They use the same, they all use Amwaste.
They all, they all ways. I thought you had options in the parish. I thought you had options in the parish to pick which company you wanna.
Well, everybody put out their bids and they came out with the best, the best bid. So everybody took them as the, the, uh, the company to use. But as we're knowing and seeing and listening from our constituents, we're having issues.
And I thank you, Lacey, for the information that you did give me about keeping a track with it, though, that, you know, for your spirit, so.
Dory has a running spreadsheet of every address that is missed. We send on average eight to ten addresses a day at this point. And that's just the specific addresses. Sometimes it's entire blocks. Um, pretty much every Friday, I drive downtown to see if at least downtown has been emptied because we know that will turn into a real big problem quickly. And probably every other Friday, we're having problems. So.
But, you know, I mean, if it's a virus, I mean, everybody's facing that, those issues across everywhere. So, I mean, that's, that's why I kinda wanted to see, uh, you know, if, if the, any other company locally somewhere around here, residents were having the same issue with, with that, that company, you know. Uh, some company is trying to get the business, obviously gonna say, you know, they're doing a great job. So I, I just didn't know if any of y'all had.
Waste management has not had any, you asked about people outside the parish.
Yeah.
They are able to select the provider that they wish to. Amwaste is the, the parish is providing some services to the parish, and that's who they contracted with. But waste management is also available to people throughout the parish, and they seem to be staying on schedule, um, and picking up everything that's out there. So, but that's just outside the parish. Uh, we've heard all kinds of different reasons why things are not being picked up. And a lot of it has been, you know, well, there's more people staying at home, so they're doing more projects. There's more vegetative debris because of the storms and because of the projects. And really, it's just a different answer every week. And the answer is liquidated damages that's in the contract.
And my response to them is if you look at the garbage cans that they pick up and dump, there are a lot of restaurants that are not working. There's a lot of dumpsters that don't get picked up. So my response was, why don't you put some of these drivers and some of these other trucks and do the, the pickup door to door. So whether that's true, what you're saying or not, we are having problems, and we're documenting, and we encourage Bob and Robbie to do it with the parish so we can all get together and possibly address this on a big scale if it continues.
Any else, Kip? Steve?
Yeah, just, just covered FYI. Um, I've been working with Ms. Fagosten, who's, you know, one of litter chairmans. Uh, in this council several months ago, uh, she had addressed this in, in regards to the clothing donation boxes, especially in regards to the one by Winn-Dixie, the ones by Winn-Dixie. And we had removed several of them except for the Fuller Center ones, uh, under the condition that, you know, we would monitor it. Um, she's been keeping me apprised of that, as she does live in my district. And, uh, I don't know if it's COVID or what, but they have not been able to, they have not been able to maintain them at all. So I've been working with Mr. Cece and Mr. Bobby and Robert, and also the people at the Fuller Center. I have them involved. So we're gonna be removing those, those dumpsters by the Winn-Dixie because it has gotten to be extremely unsightly.
Thanks for working on that. Uh, Devon, did you say you have anything?
Yes, thank you. Uh. One of the issues I'm dealing with, Kip and I both dealing with it, uh, the guys wanting to go in the park in these, uh, Martin Luther King Park and Moonie Park to play ball. And the recreation department, I think they doing one thing, but it's, the area is so gray on application that they have to have insurance in order to go in the park. And some of the guys come up here today, and with the virus and everything going on, because I see now everything gonna be on the virus every time you ask a question. With the virus and everything going on, uh, they would like to go in the park and just play ball. Uh, they just try, they just trying to do something. And I think what we need to realize, and that's what all of, you know, they know how many people go to be in the park, uh, they done did their homework and everything. I think you better start letting them go to the park. And the reason I say this, sir, if you keep them in the house, oh, there's so much that they can do in the house. And sooner or later, they gonna start going in your house doing crazy stuff. So I think we need to be, uh, a little bit more better. I think we need to be better in letting these guys go to the park and stuff to play ball or whatever they wanna do. It ain't like they going to the park drinking and smoking dope or none of that, because most of these guys, uh, we all grew up together, but they just wanna do some activities in the park. And if the park are closed, let's put signs in the parks saying the parks are closed, and that way they know they can't go to the park. And another issue I'm still having is the four-wheelers and dirt bike. And I noticed that the police department, they can come and, uh, do roadblocks for, uh, inspection stickers, uh, tini windows. So if we can do the roadblocks for that, please let's do the roadblocks and get the four-wheelers and the dirt bikes off the street, please. Thank you.
As far as the parks go, we've been loosening the, the strings on letting people in and out. The insurance is generally for people who wanna have tournaments, and that's pretty much a standard. If you have a tournament, they prefer you to have insurance. Just playing ball, we've been loosening the parks and letting people get in. Uh, there's a function, and then, as you know, the governor came on and wants everyone to be, uh, all with masks, of course, but less people in public, less people in the parks. So we, we have a good community. We really do. We have people that are doing a lot of the things that they're supposed to be doing with masks. They're staying away, they're distancing. A lot of our businesses have shut back down, so there's a lot of good things. So we're working with folks as far as the parks go as well, and we're hoping that when they do have an event, they do it right. The insurance issue is, you know, if you're gonna have a tournament, you know, either we change the policy or we don't. But generally, people just playing in the park, we hadn't been stopping that here of late. Uh, and we're trying to allow people to, to get in there. So if it's just playing a normal pickup game. As far as the four-wheelers, that's a big problem. Um, we started following them to the house, talking to the parents, hoping the parents would, would, uh, keep them off the streets. Four-wheelers are running between houses and, you know, it's almost like chasing a motorbike for a police officer. And I'll let the chief, if you wanna address it, come on up. That's a tough thing to do. We've had calls on also the golf carts and other areas. So we're doing the same thing we do with the four-wheelers. First time, we're gonna talk to the parents. Second time, we may talk to the parents. Depends on the police officer and what they wanna do. Uh, then we start towing the four-wheeler, and we've towed. And then after that, we start, we're talking about ticketing the, the, the parents. Uh, it's, it's an issue. The four-wheelers are, and also the golf carts. Letting young kids that don't have licenses drive the golf carts around, somebody could get hurt. So with that being said.
I'll tell you that my records division, since the last time we had a conversation about the, the four-wheelers and the dirt bikes, and Kip, you also, uh, we've been keeping track. And just from that point, I believe it was right at seventeen citations, uh, with many vehicles being towed. Um, we just towed two motorcycles in your district the other day, little dirt bikes. Uh, when we brought the kids home, the parents said, well, why'd you do it this time? Last time y'all didn't. Um, so there's enforcement over there. A roadblock for a dirt bike. I mean, if they see us a block up the road on a dirt bike, they easily can hit between a house, probably not gonna get lucky and get them that way. Um, but we are doing enforcement. If you'd like to see the actual numbers, uh, Ms. Judy Warren in record, she keeps track of everything, um, as far as those vehicles and ones we tow, as well as we, uh, the citations we give. So, and there has been enforcement. Just so unfortunate, the parents go out, get them out of tow and get them out of hock and let the kids drive them again.
Well, is it, is it on the record that a four-wheeler hit a five-year-old kid, uh, on Natchez Street?
I, I, I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah. A four-wheeler hit a kid, a five-year-old kid, and they were supposed to cut the kid leg off, but they end up saving the kid leg, and the kid end up getting eighteen stitches in the head.
I'd imagine that there is a report on that. If the police came out, I'm just not familiar.
Well, what you calling, uh, the police came out and ambulance came out, so.
Yeah, so there's an accident report that would've been done for that, yes.
Yeah.
All right, look, it's, it's an absolute problem. I agree with you. Um, and, and the problem goes from us getting over there, writing the citations, us towing the vehicles. Um, uh, Mr. Wells, you, you called me one day and was upset because we were chasing behind them. It's unfortunate, but those four-wheelers, if we get behind them, they run.
Gee, don't say I was mad at you.
No, no, no. Well, you called wanting to know why we were chasing them. And.
Yeah.
And that's just something that we unfortunately have to deal with. Um, you're right, you were mad. I apologize for that. But you did call me and question me about that. But the problem is, is we, we run behind them. We chase them behind them. And it's, uh, I, I've been dealing with, with Ms. Williams over there. She's called multiple times, and we've talked to her, and we're trying to talk to the parents. The parents are, are going to get in the vehicles from the tow yards and they giving them right back to the kids. So, uh, if you're willing, I'm, I'm more than happy to load you up in my car. We could all go talk to the parents together, and maybe we can get something accomplished. But that's not what's happening. They paying a hundred and sixty-dollar tow bill and returning the bikes to the kids, and they write back on them. But it's not just kids either, because I stopped one the other day on, um, was it Perry and Live Oak? Uh, there was an older guy on the bike. So it's, it's just kinda something right now we're dealing with, as, as well as golf carts and, and other districts also. So, um, it's a, it's a vicious cycle. They, you, you write them a ticket, especially juveniles, it goes to juvenile court. Um, they do whatever they do there, and then if you tow it, then the parents get it out and give it back to them. But we're gonna continue to enforce it. And like I said, if you'd like to see those numbers, Ms. Judy Warren in our records division, she keeps track of it all for us.
Well, I think if y'all stop warning the parents and actually just start towing the vehicles.
Well, we've already been towing. We've been siding and towing.
Stop warning the parents and start towing the vehicles.
Well, we've been doing that.
Yeah. I guarantee we'll see a change, because you can only tow me one time, and guess what? I'm not gonna do it again.
Well, if that was the case, we wouldn't have crime in this country. But people don't necessarily always learn after one time. But I, I can tell you, we have been towing them. We keep the recalogs, we keep everything. And like I said, I can definitely show those to you and give you the exact numbers. Um, but that's at the point where we're doing it. We're actually towing vehicles and, and towing the four-wheelers and the dirt bikes.
Thank you.
While you up here, Chief, uh, do we have a sound ordinance for the street bikes on the road, or, or is it any ordinance in place for that?
One twenty-point-three is, uh, city ordinance. It's, uh, twenty-one, one twenty-point-three is loud music. Um, dirt bikes or loudness from that would probably just fall under the, the criminal statute of, of disturbing the peace.
Been having a few complaints on Old Barrish Highway from some of the residents that live in the city across there at certain early mornings, just, you know, speeding, obviously, but, you know, with the loud bikes, pretty much at the same time, early in the morning, and some of the, you know, people, you know, still sleeping at five or six, you know.
And you shoot me an email at the time, so would they say in it, I can put out a unit in that area to see if we can get lucky and catch them. I mean, that's, loud music from vehicles is, is something that you almost just gotta be lucky to be right close to where it is. And if you can kinda narrow it down for us.
Yeah.
Then we can put somebody out there, and hopefully we can kinda catch them for doing it coming through.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, Mayor?
I believe we emailed each of you to let you know that Pam Lightfoot with DOTD wasn't gonna be here. Uh, just once again, thanking everyone for doing what they need to be doing with this COVID. Uh, another week of phase two, with some things backed off with the governor and, uh, numbers going up. So please continue to mask up, wash hands, uh, social distance, and, and just be aware of others. If you're sick, please stay home.
Now for our minutes of June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty. Need a motion, please?
Make a motion that we accept our June twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, uh, minutes from that meeting.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Resolution, old business, none, new business. Number one, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a service, services agreement between Tangipahoa Parish Government Animal Control and the City of Hammond for sixty thousand fifty-seven dollars from July first, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Lacey?
This is the annual contract that we sign with Tangipahoa Parish Government to, uh, collect any animals, whether they be dogs or cats, that are just kind of out roaming and causing issues. Um, it is based on our census numbers, how much we contribute. This is not a negotiable amount. It is budgeted as part of the budget.
Do they keep record or stats of that, about how many they pick up animal control?
They do. Yeah, they do. And I don't remember if that was part of your budget binder, but I can forward you the stats that they provide us each, each year.
I agree.
I think they sent theirs like maybe a, a couple of days late, so it probably didn't make it to the binders. But when we put the new budget in, we can update that for you.
Any other questions from the council? Anyone here on this matter? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'm gonna stall at right before, right after our call, because we do have YouTube, so that's why I'm taking a minute. That's the purpose. If anybody on YouTube wants to chime in. Number two, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Crime Stoppers of Tangipahoa Parish for nine thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars from July first, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
This is the allocation that was in the budget of nine thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars. Crime Stoppers operates a crime prevention tip line, uh, that you see actually goes out with each one of our press releases when we're asking for the public's help in identifying suspects or vehicles. Um, they also do several crime prevention activities throughout the year and have a organization for teenagers to help be aware of crime and prevent crime.
See, Michelle Gallo, have you reviewed the contract? No problems there?
No problems.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions from the council? Anyone on, anyone here on this matter? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Child Advocacy Services, Inc., for twenty thousand dollars from July one, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
This is the amount that was allocated in this year's budget. Um, the contract just provides the tools to be able to pay that amount out. Um, Child Advocacy Services, otherwise known as CASA, um, does a lot of child, uh, abuse prevention strategies and also performs forensic interviews with children who have had, uh, traumatic experiences.
Okay. Questions or comments? Anybody? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Tangipahoa Voluntary Council on Aging for fifty thousand dollars from July first, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
This is the annual allocation for this fiscal year. Uh, the Tangipahoa Voluntary Council on Aging, uh, supplies the city's bus system, and so the majority of funds go to operating the city's bus.
Questions or comments? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number five, a resolution to author, to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Tangipahoa African American Heritage Museum for thirty-five thousand dollars from July one, two thousand and twenty, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Again, this is the annual allocation for this museum. Um, we consider this part of our economic development efforts for the city as they bring in people from across the state and nation to come view the museum. They also offer a STEM, uh, camp in the summertime, uh, for kids, and that's what these funds go to help support.
Anyone here on this matter? Would you like to address the council? Come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Samuel C. Paul, and I address as one oh three Garrett Drive.
My name is Samuel C. Paul, and I address 103 Garrett Drive, Hammond. I would just like to thank the council for giving us the extra ten thousand dollars on this. I didn't want to text, and then I just wanted to thank them in person. So we thank you for it. Probably next year, we could look at a different thing, and we might can get equal with everybody. But we appreciate it. I thank you for it.
Mr. Samuel, how do you spell your last name?
P-A-U-L.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Pleasure of the council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Number six, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Children's Discovery Center for ninety thousand dollars from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
Similar to the prior allocation, this is in the name of economic development and education. They do attract people from all over the state and other states to come into this museum or educational center. So the ninety thousand dollars goes to support those efforts.
I'll note that it contains the paragraph of us dialing it down ten thousand dollars every year until they get to fifty thousand dollars if the monies are available. So just pointed that out, as we talked about last year. Any questions or comments on this one?
Yeah, don't forget, we talked about the pool too also, last year also. Thank you.
Any other comments? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Louisiana Department of Veteran Affairs for one thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars from July 1st, 2020 to June 30th, 2021.
This is an allocation based on population and shared throughout the parish to operate a Veterans Affairs Office in Hammond. So the money just goes towards that. We also pay for a phone line for them.
Any questions or comments on this one?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
And as to these nonprofits, we had discussed in the last meeting, actually having a special session to discuss how to deal with the pool idea. So I guess I'll circulate an email to see if you guys want to do that by special session or come in early, or just put it on one of the agendas here, so we can actually try to move forward with that idea.
We did also modify the contract this year to require the three years of tax records. We had already required a program report and an audit, but this also, I think Councilman Leon had brought that up at the last meeting.
But every year, they send in every year though, already though, right?
They send an audit every year.
Okay.
Which is different than their tax records that they may file with the IRS. So it's just kind of a different way to look at the finances.
Okay.
May just give us more information.
All right, thank you.
Number eight, a resolution to urge and request all departments within the City of Hammond to utilize every available avenue and resource to promote and encourage response to the 2020 federal decennial census, decennial, excuse me, census. I was approached by Representative Nikki Muscarra asking that we review this and pass it if we find it appropriate. It just basically is urging the city to try and promote the census because we are, I think it's like forty-ninth or something, or in the forties of returns for the state, and it greatly affects federal programs and money that the state receives. And so, in addition to the departments doing it, I hope everyone else here will and get them mailed out.
I think Hammond's participation rate right now is forty-nine percent.
Okay.
Have responded, and it is a little different this year, but people can go online, they can make the phone call. It's really short amount of questions, just takes a few minutes, and everybody counts because we want all those counts to be here that determines our federal and state allocations of grant monies and pools that are available to us going forward.
Is that board formed, that one that time you asked us a while back about appointing board? Remember, so that committee for the census?
We only had two responses with their representatives.
It's only two, so we never really formed, we never went forward, we're getting that committee together?
It was meant to be a marketing committee to help get the word out about the census. The chamber also has a similar function and a marketing committee that they established under there, so.
So we just never really went through that?
We asked multiple times for representatives and never received all those from the council members, so.
We could still do it, we just need the rest of the.
I sent mine in.
I have yours, and I have the two that I have, but I didn't have the other.
That would probably help out a good bit if we had the committee that was formed and active.
We asked.
Yeah, I sent mine in. I just assumed that it was carried on by the, you know, city.
So the resolution here is hyperlinked. You all have been emailed. If anybody has any questions about the census, this resolution, the city is okay with it, and I've run it by Andre too, to make sure that they were okay with it.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
I will make one other quick note there. The census actually is using our Safe Haven facility for all of their training and the location. So the city has already provided lots of resources to help with the census, and it looks like Lisa may have a comment also.
Someone asked, what does that look like, what resources would be utilized to accomplish the census resolution?
Well, I think using our Safe Haven building is certainly an example of that. And the committee, if we were to get it formed, to do some marketing and whether we allocate money or we use some of the census money to help push the message. I'm not, this is a fairly new resolution that was drafted by Nikki Muscarra, and I don't think that it's been implemented, but it's been passed in other municipalities, so.
I think the idea is just to use every meeting, every opportunity possible, Facebook posts, website posts, anything out there, media, Daily Star, anything we can get out there to remind people to fill out their cards and to get that information in.
Who set up the committee or brought that into effect or tried to even?
That was the young lady that came and gave a presentation.
That's right, yeah, okay, yeah. I mean, that probably would help if we would've just followed through with it, so.
All right, number nine, a resolution, one, accepting a five-thousand-dollar grant from the Walmart Local Communities Grant Program for Improvements to Zemurray Dog Park, and two, authorizing the mayor or his designated to complete and sign related documents. Charles Borchers?
This one's pretty simple. We were able to secure five thousand dollars from the Walmart Distribution Center in Robert. They've actually already sent the check, so. We're gonna apply these funds toward the benches. We've been talking about additional seating for the park for quite a while. So now we have some funds. We're gonna apply that to the benches. The benches have been ordered. They're probably, we're probably looking at now about eight weeks before they'll be delivered.
Are they backlog because of the COVID?
Yes.
Okay, because I know this was a while ago, they were gonna be eight weeks.
They typically take six to eight weeks. We've been told that because of COVID, they're now taking somewhere between eight and twelve weeks. So we placed the order about two and a half, three weeks ago. So we're probably looking at seven or eight weeks.
How many benches?
Eight, eight in total, plus the two that are there, so it'll be ten seating spaces.
And the benches have to go on a concrete pad, right?
Yes.
Aren't we doing that? So we have Robert Morgan who's gonna?
Robert Morgan, yes, when we get a little bit closer to delivery, the plan is to erect some small slabs. We've done this in other parks. Clark Park is one of the ones that comes to mind. It's basically a six-by-six or six-by-eight-foot slab that the bench can mount to. And that allows anyone that's sitting at the bench not to get their feet dirty.
Any other questions, any comments on this? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 10, a resolution supporting the submission of an application for reimbursement to the Coronavirus Relief Fund for necessary expenditures incurred in preparation for mitigation of response to or recovery from the coronavirus pandemic between May 1st and June 30th, 2020. Charles?
This is very similar to a resolution that was previously adopted by the council. That was for March and April. This is now for May and June. I will probably be coming back to the council about a month from now to talk about July and August. The state is dividing these funds into phases until the funds basically run out. The last one, I think there was a question from Ms. Gonzalez about how much was the amount? We applied for about sixty-four thousand, and that's what we got. Just this past weekend, they announced that we'd be awarded around that same amount. For this one, we're probably looking a little bit less because we had started to kind of transition out of COVID and into kind of getting back to normal operations. But I think it's still gonna be in the forty thousand, maybe fifty thousand dollar range. Our next one may actually go up with the amount of overtime that's been worked and the amount of leave that's been taken related to COVID.
How did that sixty-four thousand come about? Was it just a figure that y'all calculate somehow?
The majority of it was overtime, fire and police overtime. And then I think there was about seventeen thousand in purchases related to hand sanitizer, disinfectant.
Unexpected expenses that came up due to the virus, okay.
So this application is for an additional, that has been paid, and you're giving them new expenses?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And that just goes into the general fund, or where is that, sixty-four?
This is reimbursing costs that we've already expended, so it's a little unusual with the fiscal year ending, but I imagine that it'll go to reimburse those purchases that were made, and then whatever surpluses were left will go into the general fund.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this one? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charles. Eleven, a resolution to approve Q's Seafood and Deli located at 1705 C. M. Fagan Drive, Hammond, Louisiana 70403, to obtain a permit to sell high-low alcohol on premises. The owner is Fagan Food Mart LLC. Laura Hammond.
Hi, I have one correction. It is not on-premises. This is a convenience store that's selling packaged alcohol.
How was that?
I would say to amend the agenda to provide that this is for packaged alcohol, not for on-premises sale.
I make a motion to amend the agenda to remove on-premises and then provide that it's for packaged alcohol. Give me a second.
Second.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
All right, then we can proceed with it.
Okay, sorry about that. So we're seeking approval for packaged alcohol, for high-low permit for the convenience store. It's Q Seafood located, I'm sorry, located by Don's Seafood. I'm sure it's been there for many, many years. It's a change of ownership. It's by Don's Seafood, the Hancock Bank Wintrays Apartments. They have done everything that we've asked them to do, met all requirements, including inspections. So we are seeking your approval, and Mr. Mahmoud is in the audience if you have any questions for him.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Mahmoud Hamid. The address is 1705 C. M. Fagan Drive.
Your workers all understand they have to ID people and the ages for alcohol and cigarettes and all those. Okay? Any other questions or comments? Pleasure of the council. Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number 12, thank you.
Thank you.
Number 12, a resolution to ratify and award bids received June 11th, 2020 for concrete street improvements fiscal year 2020, project 42012022. Webb?
Y'all should have the bid summary. You can see we got eight competitive bids, thank goodness, and so we're within budget. Recommend award to Richard Price Contracting for seven hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. And this includes some repairs in the Iowa District, Brandy Lane, Weston Oaks, and Zemurray Park Pool Parking Lot.
This also includes the first part of the Old Covington, right, or no?
Not this.
Not this, okay, that's already?
That's included in the, yeah.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Yeah. Thank you, Webb, for y'all having more than one contractor bidding on the job. Thank you.
Sir?
Thank you for having more than one contractor bidding on the job.
We got good notes?
Yes, thank you.
It's good.
Yes.
All right, pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Webb. Final adoption of ordinance, none. Introduction of an ordinance, one. Introduction of an ordinance to accept completion of work on the Commerce Street Improvements and Cul-de-sac to release performance bond letter of credit in the amount of two hundred eighty-seven thousand nine hundred thirty-five dollars, and acceptance of two-year maintenance bond in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and fifty cents in accordance with the, I'm sorry, in accordance with as-built plans by William J. Bowden Jr., dated 6/17/2020. Tracy?
We're asking for introduction tonight and acceptance on the 28th for the next council meeting. Commerce Street, you guys heard about this a couple months ago. They've now completed all the work, done all the inspections. They're asking to release the hundred percent construction performance bond and turn that into a two-year maintenance bond, which is ten percent of the original cost of the improvements.
Questions or comments? Pleasure of the council.
Whose district is this?
Devon's.
Devon's district.
Got any questions, Devon?
I'm okay, thank you.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman DeViterio?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye, I'm sorry.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Motion approved, and public hearing is set for July 28th, 2020.
Number two, an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by Vasan L. Moore to allow placement of a manufactured home meeting all code requirements on lots 8 and 9, Block 10, Greenville Park subdivision, located at 108-110 West Louisa West Street, Zone RS3. Recommended approval, four to one, and with the following conditions by the zoning commission. Approval shall be with the understanding that such use is a personal right Approval shall be with the understanding that such use is a personal right that expires upon the change of ownership of Vaishon L. Moore, and must meet all placement requirements for a manufactured home. Tracy.
So this is a standard ECU with the standard conditions. Our board voted four to one for placement of this mobile home. If you read your staff report, it is not in a proposed mobile home area, but Mr. Moore has gotten several adjacent property owner signatures that's in your packet in support of his placement.
Questions or comments?
And whose district is this?
Stephon's district.
Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitturio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Public hearing is set for July 28, 2020.
Number three, introduction of an ordinance for an expanded conditional use request by Diane W. Hooks to allow placement of manufactured home meeting all code requirements on Lot 20, Rose Hill Park subdivision located at 2401 Center Avenue, Zoned RS3. Recommended approval 5-0 with the commissions on- with the conditions on the agenda.
These are the state or conditions that you see on every expanded conditional use. Ms. Diane Hooks will live here as her residence, and this is in Sam's district. We're asking to introduce at the next meeting. And it is in a proposed mobile home area.
Sorry, zoned out on the-
No, it's not zoned it. It's in a proposed area.
Okay.
Right. They're coming to you because it's not zoned.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Pleasure of the council.
Sam, is this your area?
Yeah, this is mine. I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitturio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Public hearing set for July 28, 2020.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four, introduction of an ordinance to create the Accrual Buyout Fund. Lacey Landrum.
We've had lots of discussion over the last month or so about establishing this fund. So this is an ordinance designed to do that. First off, the funds are reserved only to pay out accrued time that is due at employee terminations, particularly retirements. That's how we'll be using the fund this first year while we still monitor cash buyouts and whatnot of K-time and other vacation time. B, the funds can be paid out for this purpose without returning to two council meetings every time an employee terms. So when an employee leaves, we can just cut the check, which has already been appropriated in terms of the total amount by the council in this fund. This would be similar to how we use the Witness Fee Fund, which is part of your binders already, because it has the different line items used for salary and for social security or other taxes that are due with that. So that's what this also accomplishes, is that the funds can be paid out and recorded appropriately as salary and taxes instead of within one single line item, which is kind of how we left it with the budget that was adopted. And then the last thing is, there was lots of confusion, it seemed like, at the last meeting about whether this was retirement money that was coming from the state, or whether this was accrued time that's bought- that's paid when an employee leaves. And so we wanted to name it according to what it actually is, which is accrued time that's paid out when they leave. So the language is there. This was sent to the council, and this is for introduction. I hope that we can introduce it and have more discussion at the next meeting.
Questions or comments?
What was the policy right now that we had for that? That was there any policy for the guys that retired previously that y'all had to pay out? Did y'all just- did it have to- it didn't have to come to us? How long did it have to pay them out? Like, I'm sure they had a couple of retirees that had time that had to get paid out. What was on the books?
There's not officially a policy. It's just, I mean, it's in the employee manual, but you pay out what to do. So whether they have K-time, which is compensatory time rather than overtime that would have been paid, if they have K-time that's on the books, if they have vacation leave that hasn't been used, or if they have sick leave. Sick leave is paid out at retirements only. So if an employee resigns rather than retires, they lose their sick leave, but sick leave's paid out at retirements. And all that is specified in the employee manual.
Okay. I just meant like when they retire and they get those hours that they are owed to get paid for.
Uh huh.
They, right now, leave with a check that day?
No.
There's probably a policy, or there's probably some kind of standard of 30 days, or what- what is it?
No, so payroll runs every two weeks. And if the employee, so the check that the employee receives at payroll is going to be whatever their last hours were that they worked during that payroll period. And then the next check that will be cut has all of their buyout time, so it'll have all the leftovers. And that's usually cut within the next week or two, depending on the circumstances. But it's never past 30 days, or it's never up to 30 days.
That's what I was getting at, yeah.
Yeah, it's always within two weeks, and sometimes it's faster, depending on the circumstances.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DeWitturio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Number five, introduction of an ordinance to amend the city of Hammond budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, and to transfer $300,000 from the Police Administration Retirement Line Item into the Accrual Buyout Fund. Lacey.
So in all the discussion that was had at the last meeting, these funds ended up in a new line item called retirement within the Police Administration budget. And so what we're doing is moving these from that line item in the general fund to this specific fund that would then have these parameters as established by the ordinance for payouts.
That was what I was trying to get at in the first place. I didn't even know, understand why it was even put in the same line item as the just